Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your patience as we work out some technical difficulties. But let's get right into it. My name is Jasmine Carter. I'm an organizer here at the Alaska Center Education Fund. I'm the South Central Civic Engagement Organizer. Welcome to the twenty twenty-three Youth Ask School Board Candidate Forum. This forum was planned and hosted by community members and students from growing Alaskan leaders, the Alaska Coalition of Bi-Pac Educators, Anchorage Youth Vote, Alaska Youth for Environmental Action, and Great Alaska Schools. Tonight, you're joined by candidates who are seeking election for Seat C and Seat D. Thank you so much for participating tonight, and we look forward to hearing from you. Now, let's pause for a land acknowledgement.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joshua Pack. I'm a sophomore from Polaris K-12, and I'm here representing Anchorage Youth Vote. We would first like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that we work, live, and play on the traditional lands of the Denina people. We are grateful for their stewardship for these lands we call home. We also honor and respect the enduring relationship that exists between them and this land.
Thank you, Josh. This event is being recorded and streamed through Facebook Live and will be available on the Alaska Center Facebook page and YouTube to re-watch later. We will also be publishing the responses to the lightning round questions on the page as well. The rules for tonight's forum are that candidates will remain respectful and civil at all times. Premise must be turned on, and candidates must be muted when not speaking. We also please ask that anyone who is watching tonight's forum to be respectful and civil. There are students online with us, so let's make sure we are being positive role models for them. The speaker order is alphabetical by last name, and we will be rotating candidates. Kai and AJ will be be the timers for tonight. You will have two minutes for long-answer questions and one minute for your introductions. And you will have a thirty-second timer bell that will go off, as well as Kai or AJ will hold up a white piece of paper. Could you do that right now? Okay, great. Thank you, AJ. But once the timer is up, you will be muted. Since we have candidates from two seats tonight, as voters, you will vote for one candidate for Seat C and one for Seat D, depending on which district you live in. We have four candidates running for the two seats, but unfortunately, two candidates did not respond to our invitation. First, candidates will introduce themselves, then we will move on to our lightning round questions. Next, we will have three long-answer questions, followed by a word association round. And then we will have three more long-answer questions. And we will also be ending the forum with live questions submitted on Facebook Live and in the Zoom chat. So if you have any questions, feel free to make a comment on the livestream or send it in the chat. And I'll pass it to Kai. Vote, you're muted, Kai.
My name is Kai. I am in tenth grade, and I'm homeschooled, but I used to go to Betty Davis East High School. Let's start with a brief introductions. Please tell us a bit about yourself and why you are running for school board. We will start with Seat C candidate Irene Bull. You will have one minute.
My name is Irene Bull. I'm running for Anchorage School Board Seat C. I firmly believe that we must prioritize public education as an investment in our community. I'm confident that by working together, we can make a real difference in the lives of our children and create for them a brighter future by advocating for increased funding for public education, appropriate compensation, and respect for our teachers and staff, and increase transparency and equity in our district. As a dedicated and passionate advocate for education, I believe that I can make a real difference in the lives of our children. And as somebody who has experienced a lot of the hardships that many of our community members face, I believe that I am a good representation of the community. You can also learn more about my campaign, my background, and my policies at IreneBull.com, which, you know, it's spelled there, but it's B-O-L-L.
And now for Andy Hallman.
Well, thank you very much for hosting this. I'm finishing my second term on the Anchorage School Board. I worked for twenty years for the Anchorage School District in a classroom and got involved in some of the political stuff when they changed the retirement system for teachers and state employees. And just realizing that what happens in the legislature, what happens on the school board can impact how your classroom goes. It can make it better, it can make it worse. And in some cases, I'm afraid it has made it worse. But I was retiring and had spent time campaigning for people to be on the school board, didn't actually see anyone that I liked running at the time, and ran for one of the seats and won, and continued to try to bring the voice of a teacher to say, you may think this is what you're about to do, but this is how it's going to actually play out in front of kids in the classroom. My website's voteandyak.com. And again, thank you.
Thank you. Now Josh will explain the lightning round.
The first round for tonight will be a lightning round of questions. We have ten statements that we will ask if you agree or disagree with. I will read the statement and ask you to put your green paper up if you agree and red paper up if you disagree. We understand that all these issues are nuanced and have gray areas. But for the purpose of these questions, we like to indicate your agreement or disagreement. We will be publishing all these answers on the Facebook event page along with the forum recording tomorrow. Please wait to put up your red or green paper until I finish reading the question. Let's get started. Question one: Will you advocate for more mental health resources in schools? Two: Do you support evidence-based sex education inclusive of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, two-spirit, and non-binary identities and experiences to be taught in schools? Do you support Proposition fourteen, which would collect current revenue from local candidates' taxes to provide childcare and early childhood education? Is it important that the diversity of educators and district leadership reflect the diversity of the student body? Should there be more youth voice and input in school board discussions and decisions? Do you support extending lunch and recess time? Should students be expected to say this pledge of allegiance every morning?
I have to say the opportunities there, but no one should be compelled to say it.
Do you think the current ASD curriculum shares true holistic histories of Black Indigenous people of color communities? Are you in support of raising the base student allocation? Should teachers be trained on racism and systemic racism in the education system? Thank you very much. I'll pass it to Lena, who will explain the next round of questions.
Hi, my name is Lena Adase. I am a junior, and I go to Anzip Acceleration High School and Diamond High School. We will now go into our first round of long-answer questions. You will each have two minutes to answer. Remember to watch the timer on the screen to see when your time is up, and you will be muted if you go more than ten seconds over time. Question one: School board members need to advance the priority needs, concerns, and opportunities of the students in the district. How would you hold yourself accountable to the students of ASD K-12 during your term? I'll hand it over to Andy Hallman to kick us off.
It's a complex question, in that the board doesn't directly run the district. The superintendent does that. So in a lot of cases, a lot of people feel like the board can step in and rearrange things or direct things, and we really can't. We have to hold the superintendent accountable when things happen. And the main way is being available to the public, listening to the public when they come speak to us, or when we talk to them outside of a formal meeting. And that's the primary way, and it's a bit awkward and imperfect, to be sure.
You still had about a minute and twenty-three seconds left.
Okay, I was thinking it was just one minute. So to add to it, I'd just say that elections are a key way, where hopefully if people are paying attention, they know whether or not someone's been responsive, whether or not someone's advocated in the meeting on behalf of students or positive changes in the classroom. And I think that's everything I need to say on that.
Okay, thank you. Now, it's your turn, Irene.
So, yeah, one of my biggest things is making sure that I'm available to the community and that I'm listening to the community and what the community needs and wants. That's really important to me, and especially because I believe that the main way that a school board member learns what is needed and what they need to be, how they need to be voting is by listening to the community. But speaking of voting, school board members regularly have the opportunity to put forth policies regarding the district or vote on policies regarding the district. And I believe that it's very important that in every policy that we vote on, we need to recognize the all of the ways that it could affect each type of students that we have in our district, whether that's students that, you know, have a stable home life and come from a high-income household, or students who are homeless and have no income, or students who are below the poverty line and have very little income and struggle with transportation to and from school. Or, you know, there's a lot of diversity in our district, and we need to think about all of the different types of students and families in our district when we're thinking about every decision that we make. That's really important for me.
Thank you. Now we will move on to our next question. With the proposed closing of six elementary schools due to insufficient and unstable funding, how will you, as a school board member, support and navigate this change within each community, starting with Irene Bull?
You know, I really hope that our district doesn't come to having to close schools because that has widespread effects on our communities, especially given that the schools that are proposed to close are Title I schools for the most part, schools where it's mostly harder for families to get their kids to school already, even with how close they are to home. So I really hope that it doesn't come to that. As a school board member, I will be speaking to our legislators from a position of government and advocating for an increased funding for our school district so that it doesn't come to having to close schools. But also recognizing that if our decisions have to be made, that we need to make those in a respectful and careful manner.
Thank you. Your next, Andy Hallman.
Um, you know, it's a tough call because a number of these schools were really nestled in neighborhoods. You literally could throw a baseball into like fifteen or twenty front yards from a lot of the buildings that we were looking at. It's partly funding in that we have to look hard at every dollar we spend. But it is the case that right now Anchorage is shrinking, and no one predicts that as a city, we're going to turn around and start growing again. So two things are happening. One is we are paying to maintain space, paying for utilities and whatnot. It's not really being used very well. The other is that as schools get small, balancing class size and having the staff be rightly adjusted to the size of the building becomes more difficult to do. You can wind up with classes either too big or too small because you can't split them as efficiently as you can in a larger school. So unless things turn around, this is something that we are going to have to revisit. We are closing one school, Abbott Loop, which has a rather huge amount of building modifications that need to be made to it. Literally, it needs to be replaced at a cost of like thirty to forty million dollars. So that's money we can save and put into instruction, smaller classrooms, the things that really directly impact students. And the other part, we need to have a conversation with Anchorage voters to say, are you willing to support small schools? They are more expensive to operate.
Thank you both for your answers. Question three. With the many workforce shortages, including teachers, substitute teachers, and bus drivers, how will you help our schools find people to fill these positions? Andy Hallman, you're up first.
I don't think anybody's come up with a better solution yet than stepping up and paying more. And when you look at the support positions in particular, they they've not been funded very well for a long time, and they lag way behind the private sector in terms of what people can make right now. There used to be quite a few people that worked those jobs for the benefits, retirement, health insurance. Those were huge benefits for a job that a lot of people like doing, and they got paid for doing it as well. But unfortunately, the state has hammered the retirement system. We've increased the number of hours folks need to work in order to qualify for health insurance. You know, a lot of people are just looking at it and saying, it's not worth it to me right now for how much they're getting paid, and there's a lot of openings in the private sector. So unfortunately, we're just going to have to compete, just like we do when we go to buy food or we go to buy diesel fuel for buses. We can't explain to them, we don't really have enough money, but we need the fuel anyway. We shouldn't be doing that with people either. They need to be paid decently. We want people to take those jobs and stay a long time. We want them to make connections with the students in the building, be part of the education team, and that means giving them some stability. So that is what we did with bus drivers in order to get enough people on board. And we're going to have to do it with substitute teachers. We're going to have to do it with our noon duty and our cafeteria staff. And it is going to have an impact on the cost of running the school district.
Thank you for your answer. You're next up, Irene Bull.
Like Andy said, and like I said in my introduction, yeah, what it really comes down to is appropriate compensation and respect for our teachers and our staff. We've, like he said, we've cut down their benefits and we're not competing with the private sector right now. People working for our district are not making the amount that they need to be making in order to be successful and grow and have a future here. And if we want to have people that feel like they have a future here, we need to be showing them that they have a future here. Otherwise, they go somewhere where they do have a future. That's, I think that's really all there is to say about it. It's one of the reasons why I advocate for a return to the pension system for our workers and teachers and, you know, because what's happening now just isn't cutting it.
Thank you for those thoughtful answers. I will now pass it on to AJ for the word association.
My name is Albert Grady, and I go to Clark Bennett School, and I'm in eighth grade. Next, we will move into our word association round. Both candidates should have some blank pieces of paper to write on a marker, and I will say a word, and you will when you hear that word, five seconds to write down. Then I'll count to three and ask you to hold your paper up to the camera. The first word is book bans. Okay. One, two, three. The next word is
Sorry, I'm having some problem because AJ keeps skipping in and out on my end.
Okay, go ahead.
The next word is student. One, two, three.
Okay, Irene, you can't hear him?
Yeah, I didn't even really get all of the instructions. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, no worries. We're doing the word association round right now. So when he says a word, you just write down whatever comes to mind when you hear that word. The words are also being dropped in the chat as well, so maybe you want to have that opened up. But the second word is student. Okay, AJ, I'll hand it off to you again.
The next word is teachers. One, two, three.
Can you guys come closer in the camera? Your papers are blurry. Okay.
The next word is mental health crisis. One, two, three. The next The next word is equity. One.
Two and three.
Okay, thank you.
We will now go into our second round of long-answer questions. Just as before, you will each have two minutes to answer. Question one: We have seen efforts across the country to restrict and take away books from school libraries containing LGBTQ+ African-American, mental health, and sexual education-themed books. What is your opinion on these efforts? And we will start with Irene Bull.
I think that these efforts are pretty gross. I do not support book banning because our students come from a wide variety of places and experiences, and they need to have a wide variety of literature and book banning generally comes from a place of trying to ban truth. And truth cannot be banned. And it should not be banned. Most of the books that are, all of the books that are trying to be banned are people trying to hide something that that is important and needs to be heard because they don't like it. And it's wrong. You can't censor life. Can't censor truth.
Up next is Andy Hallman.
Well, it can raise some difficult questions. First of all, in our libraries, we do select books. There are things that we consider inappropriate for kids of certain ages. And in particular, the difficult part is we don't want to sexualize children that aren't at that level yet. And so we do have to make some critical choices in certain places. But that being said, excluding people that are part of our community is wrong, shouldn't be happening. People should be able to go into the library and find books that reflect themselves, reflect their friends. And it is a basic tenet in schools and education that everybody learn to get along with each other and respect each other. And you can't pretend that some group of people doesn't exist and expect that to happen. So we do make selections in the library. It's been kind of a big thing on social media lately in Anchorage. And I'll just say, a particular book that someone brought and started reading at the board meeting really isn't appropriate for any of our libraries because it's just got some bad information in it. You don't send kids to porn sites to learn about their sexuality. It's just bad advice. Other parts of the book actually talk in a very reasonable way and a very appropriate way about various sexual issues. But we do have to look at what's in our library for accuracy and whether or not it's appropriate at certain grade levels. So it's a complicated question, but ASD on the whole, I think, has done a good job. They probably missed the mark here and there a few times. It's something we always have to work on.
For our next question. Alaska has some of the highest suicide rates among young people in the country. How will you, as a school board member, make sure students feel like they belong and are given mental health support when they need it? And we'll start with Mr. Hallman.
This is a really hard one because we've gotten so used to it as a state that I think we ignore it a lot of times. But when you look at the issues that we face in public life and in our schools and in our homes, the fact that we have the highest rate in the country by a bit. The second-place state is quite a bit behind us. It's not close. We have children that either are abused, either sexually or physically, or they witness the abuse of somebody in their home on a frequent basis. It really impacts learning. It impacts what they can focus on. It impacts their view of the future. We need more direct intervention in that flowing in resources available. We need places that people can go when they're in an abusive relationship. And unfortunately, all of these things are expensive, and we are up against certain group politicians that doesn't want to spend money on anything they don't consider essential. But if we're going to really change the quality of life in Alaska, we have to deal with them. Schools do as best they can, but that's not really what they're funded for, and it's not really their mission. But we do a lot of it. We feed a lot of kids. We spend a lot of time talking to kids after school or during free time, doing what we can to mitigate some of the damages being done. But to really address it is going to take an effort by by the whole state and by all the communities in the state.
Thank you, Mr. Hallman. Ms. Bull, you have two minutes. Ms. Bow, you have two minutes.
I, I reflect some of what Andy said is that we, we really need to ensure that there are resources available in our schools for our students who are struggling with mental health issues or life experiences um, and need somebody to talk to. Um, right now, we have we have some school counselors, um, that are shared between multiple schools and don't really have the time to to help every student. And I think that's something that needs to change. And something that ASD can do better on if we're able to get the funding. Um, like Andy said, there are, there are some, some politicians that feel like they don't want to find things that they don't find are essential, but mental health is essential, essential and high quality public education is essential. And um, it takes a lot of advocacy and to show those people that this is essential and this is what Alaska needs and this is what Anchorage needs. Um, and that's what I plan on doing. I also, you know, um, yeah, I, I think that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Uh, last question, if you were elected, what is the main thing you would like to change over the course of your three year term? And how do you propose to get there? And we will start with Ms. Bow.
I would very much like to see our state legislature raise the base student allocation to meet inflation. Now, that's not something that as a school board member I have direct control over. But that is something that as a school board member I can advocate for from a position of government. Um, that's something that's really important to me. Another thing that's really important to me is again, making sure that our educators and our staff are being compensated appropriately. And that's something that school board members have some say over. So, and I'd also like to see some increased transparency. I think that, um, we've done a little bit better with transparency over the last few years, but we still have a ways to go. Um, so that's a few of the things that I'd like to see happen. I would also like to see happen, I would like to see I would like to see some of the policies that are currently in place um, to protect, you know, children with special needs and their families. Um, and children who are experiencing some life experiences like homelessness. Um, I would like to see those followed more. And I would like to see um, better training around those policies so that they're followed more.
Thank you, Mr. Holloman, you're next.
Um, the, you know, this year in the legislature, we have, I think, the greatest chance for a significant increase in the base student allocation uh, that we've had in a long time. And it didn't just happen suddenly. It has been kind of a relentless battle by a lot of people for a long time. This year, for a number of reasons, things came together and it became an election issue and it's a big issue. So number one, I, I've been fighting that fight, decent funding for public education for decades. Uh, and I'll continue to be part of that. The next step will be to try to make it routine for the legislature to at least inflation proof, the BSA. What a lot of you may not have realized or seen is that every year we don't get inflation adjustment. Uh, it means going into the next year, we have to trim things down. We lose some staff members. We have to cut a program. Something has to go because the cost of other things increases a little bit. And there's just not as much money to run the district. Um, and that creates an atmosphere where people don't create new and exciting ideas because it comes at the cost of something that's already there. So the goal one is to get us to an appropriate level of funding. Our class sizes are too big. We, we can't do some of the things in transporting kids that we'd like to do. We can't make everything available as much as we'd like to, so we want to get to that level. And then we want to keep the adjustments coming each year so that we can maintain that. And encourage people to actually think of new and different ways to engage students and make school work better for everybody. Um, that's kind of the key thing. And then as a board member, trying to make the right decisions that make efficient use of the money and deliver the best services into the classroom for students.
We will now be asking questions viewers have submitted online. You will both have two minutes to answer. The first question. Climate change impacts our communities at all levels from transportation to health and wellbeing to food security, to economic uncertainty and so much more. How can schools build resilience to support students and respond in times of crisis? While also being leaders in fourth, making policies to stop climate change? And we will start with Mr. Holland.
So a real key area of this is good quality science instruction for everybody so that people really do understand the basis for the predictions. Um, this is one of the problems, climate change is a prediction about what's going to happen in the future. It's not an absolute certainty. But if you understand chemistry and you understand uh, what we emit into the atmosphere and you understand the, the changes that would happen that the, you can get, then you can go look and see that those changes are happening. Um, climate change is a model that has a lot of evidence supporting it and there's no reason uh, scientifically for someone to think that we're not on track for that to happen as it's been laid out. And of course, the, the follow up is um, some things will help the way or, or stop climate change better than others. Again, we needed an educated workforce and we need an educated populace to look at that and make the, the most appropriate choices. Um, we could spend a whole lot of money on something that doesn't do a whole lot. Um, we need to spend as little as possible on things that have the biggest impact. Uh, and unless people understand the basics, they don't understand why they're having to do it. It's a complicated thing. Uh, as a biology major, I took a lot of classes in ecology, um, chemistry, biochemistry. So when they talk about the changes in atmospheric chemistry and how it's impacting our life, I understand that, that makes sense to me. Uh, when they talk about some of the changes uh, to try to combat it, some of them make sense, some of them don't. Um, people are going to have to care. Uh, but yes, the, the Pentagon recognized a long time ago that climate change was going to lead to political instability. Um, there are huge ramifications and I think that's my point.
Up next is Ms. Bow.
Yeah, I mean, we do need to have um, good quality education. Um, I think a lot of issues kind of come back to that we need a, a better educated populace. We need to be raising kids that understand science at even a basic level. Um, understand that climate change is real and why and what they can do about it. Um, we need programs like recycling in schools, teaching kids about recycling and how to do it. It's not even like that big of a part of the battle against climate change, but it's something. Um, the biggest thing is just having an educated populace that leads to adults that know what we're doing. And young people who are well educated in schools turn into adults who become scientists and can help us battle climate change in new ways that maybe we haven't thought of yet. They become politicians that can help create policies that battle climate change. They become, you know, our everyday people who living their everyday lives in respect, in appropriate ways, battle climate change that way. You know, um, a lot of things come back to education.
Thank you. Our next question is Alaska's brain drain and population decline have been in the news a lot lately. How can schools play a role in keeping families and young people in Alaska? And what needs to change to make Anchorage a more attractive place for families and young people?
I go first, right, this one? Um, yes. Okay, well, I think one of the biggest things that needs to change as a young family myself, as somebody who has, you know, a kindergarten in the public school system and a child that's also going to be in the public school system. I think that one of the biggest things that needs to change is we need to start offering public preschool for all families. Um, without public preschool available for all children. For all families, it is very difficult for families. Um, Anchorage has a very hard time because we don't have childcare. And I'm not saying that preschool is childcare because it's not, but children having somewhere to go during the day from an early age, not only does it improve their social and, and educational development. Um, we've seen that it has lasting impacts, but yeah. It also means that it's easier for their parents to, when they need to go to work. Um, so that is a huge thing. We also, you know, our schools, our school district is not doing well. And young families like mine, we see that and we're like, do we, do we want to stay in Anchorage and have our kids going to these schools that maybe they're not going to get the best education or do we want to go live somewhere else where the cost of living is less and schools are better? I think that's how a lot of people are feeling right now and why a lot of people are leaving. Um, so the biggest two things that we can do is improve our school district so that we're offering higher quality education and bring it, bring up and, and also give our families um, preschool for everyone.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Holman, you're up next.
Okay, um, you know, the, the key thing is at some point, we have to make people want to live here. Um, in the past, Anchorage and Alaska have kind of counted on a boom and bust. Something happened, we paid people a lot of money. A lot of people came and stayed for a while, a lot of them left. Uh, but if you go visit what a lot of people consider are great cities in the country, there were conscious decisions by the people that lived there to be a great city. Uh, a long time ago, I took a tour of Boston. And, and it was just very evident. Boston wanted to be a great town. They needed a great university. They needed public buildings. They needed a harbor. They needed um, the things that were resources for people that were starting businesses to do things. And they consciously made those choices. Anchorage is sort of a study in the other direction. Uh, we've had things that have attracted people here. And so we've got what we've got without doing a whole lot. And, and it's not a terrible place to live. I think it's a great place to live. But for people that are starting out that want a good education, that they want a good university in the town, they want to, uh, a decent place to live without spending a whole lot of money. Anchorage is tough. Our housing costs are very high. Uh, and there aren't a whole lot of resources available to people easily. If you have a lot of money, maybe. But if you don't, it's a struggle. So we're going to have to take steps. I appreciate you asking earlier about Prop fourteen. That very much is a step in that direction, um, so that um, kids are getting the right exposure to what they can handle at their age and also is, is just something that will make parents feel like this is a great town to live in.
Thank you, Mr. Holloman. And for our final question for tonight. The legislative session is currently underway in Juneau. Is there anything in addition to raising the BSA that is a top bill or issue being considered that would impact schools and encourage that you want to see passed? And we will start with Mr. Holloman.
In addition to BSA, I, I want to see them pass more money for public school districts to do um, pre-K and, and full day kindergarten. Um, they're funding part of it right now, but they're not funding enough that it can be offered to everybody that wants it. Um, so that's a key thing. Um, I, I don't think necessarily a spending cap is a great idea. In essence, it's one legislature trying to tell another legislature how to do their job. Uh, there's, there's no legislative substitute for, for having good people go to Juneau and make the right decisions for folks back home. Um, I do hope that maybe they can work towards a sense of unity. We've had some divisions to where folks in interior don't want to pay for a ferry system. Um, folks in some of the urban areas don't want to pay for rural Alaska. Uh, we need to understand that we are one state, one people. And, and more than most states, people in one part of the state need things that other people in other parts of the state don't. And we just need to recognize that, fairly apportion things, do things that help the state work and uh, I, I don't think they'll have time to get to all that. Uh, the BSA is certainly a good place for it to start. That's one I've got.
Thank you. You have two minutes, Ms. Bow.
Yeah, I mean, in, in addition to seeing an increase in the BSA and in inflation proofing the BSA, I don't think it's going to happen in this legislative session. But I would really love it if they would, uh, if they would, if they would fix the uh, teachers and public employees retirement system. That'd be awesome. We really need that. Um, it's, it's a bit ridiculous that teachers can work their entire career and pay into a retirement system and hope, they, they just have to hope that they don't outlive what they've saved up. It's not okay. Um, but you know, um, like Andy said, I would, I would also like to just see the increased funding for public education throughout Alaska. Um, Anchorage is where I'm running and that's where I live, but we're not the only school district and um, I also recognize that education is underfunding, underfunded in the entire state.
To close off the night, we'll hear closing statements from candidates. They have one minute for any last words of the night. Thank you again to all of you for participating, starting with Andy.
Again, thank you all for putting this on. The, the key thing that's going to change things is people paying close attention to what's happening and not just going off of sound bites. And sitting through candidate forums and listening to people talk about what they will do. And then also following up to see if that's what they actually do. It's not the most exciting thing in the world. Um, certainly there are a lot of other things that are more fun. Uh, but unless people do it, you will be governed by people you don't like. And we, we see it happen when people don't really pay attention. So I appreciate the fact that you're having us come speak to you. And I know you're going to be looking at the other offices as well. Um, you know, think about what they say and whether it makes sense. Uh, think about whether it's practical, whether or not it's real. And then cast your votes accordingly, um, and, and help promote the people that you think will do the best job. And that will change the city.
Yeah, thank you for having.
Uh, now we will hear closing remarks from Ken, from CC candidate Irene Bow.
Yeah, thank you for having us here tonight and um, you know, I, I'm not the best public speaker, as I'm sure is evidenced tonight. But I am a dedicated and passionate advocate for education. But I am a dedicated and passionate advocate for education. And I do believe that I can make a real difference in the lives of our children and our community for generations to come. I firmly believe that we need to prioritize public education and or strengthen our society. And that we need to be investing in it. I also, I really think that voices like mine need to be represented on our school board. Because I am somebody who has life experiences. Um, and some of the similar life experiences that I see reflected in the community. I've experienced homelessness. I've experienced living below, well below the poverty line for a very long time. I've experienced having to try to navigate Anchorage without having any transportation whatsoever. I get it. Which is why I'm a good representation of our community on the school board. And why you can know that whenever I am making a decision and whenever I am writing a policy or voting on a policy, I will always think about those life experiences and how how I would have been affected by whatever policy is happening. Also, how our students will be affected and how their families will be affected.
Great. That concludes the two thousand and twenty-three Youth Ask School Board Candidate Forum. Thank you all so much for joining us tonight. Uh, we hope this was informative and that folks are ready to vote for their school board candidates. Remember to register or update your voter registration by this Sunday, March fifth, to participate in the municipal election. We will drop some links in the chat, um, to help you with that. Ballots will be mailed out on Tuesday, March fourteenth. Remember to mail them in or drop them off at a secure ballot box, um, location on or before April fourth. Uh, check the municipal website for any election questions. Thank you all so much again and have a great night.